Okay, I'd like to call the Monday August 1st regular town council meeting to order. Roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
President.
Counselor Mellon.
Present.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Present.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Present.
And Counselor Gardner.
Present.
We have all five counselors here in person.
At this time, I'd like everybody to arise for a moment of silence and then to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to conduct a public hearing on the proposed additional appropriation ordinance number 1873. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak on the additional appropriation ordinance 1873? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And then we'll move on to the public comment. We kindly ask that in-person public comment is limited to two minutes per person or five minutes per group spokesman, and that you keep your comments civil and constructive to public policy issues. Public comments may also be submitted electronically. If you have a comment or question about an item on the agenda that you'd like to have entered into the meeting minutes, please email that question or comment to Dustin Anderson or our town manager, or you can speak at this time. Is there anybody here that would like to speak?
I would.
Yes, we just asked you to come to the microphone, just state your name and your address, please. Thank you.
I'm Jeffrey Harrell, and I live in 1014 Whiter Lane. And I'd like to propose that Munster should, or that the town council should make a competition to make a flag for the town of Munster, as it's something I've been interested in. I think that it would increase town unity, make Munster more unique among Nebraska's Indiana towns, and give people who really care about Munster something, a symbol to rally behind. And it would likely be inexpensive and competition would give anyone a chance to submit their own ideas for what they want to apply. And also, I have a design myself right here for.
I was hoping, I was gonna ask, do you mind showing it to us up here?
I'd try to.
Telling him, please, and tell us a little bit about what you've got in there, the elements in there.
It's, I made it as a tri-color for, you know, just classic three bar tri-color of, with the Indiana torch that's on the flag of Indiana in the middle, and the black, red, and white of Munster colors as the three colors. That's like our, you know, for sports teams and stuff.
Wendy, did you see that? Can you show it down this side?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
That's really nice. We love your original idea. Thank you. That's really great.
Very good. Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? Very good. I will close the public comment. We'll move into the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move we accept the consent agenda.
Second, there's a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Five zero.
Moving to old business, first item under old business is ordinance 1873, which is the additional appropriation. We had the public hearing earlier. Is there anything else to add, or treasurer miss?
There is nothing, Council President Gardner, to add. It's the same as it was last time. We fill all the requirements by holding a public hearing and properly publishing the announcements.
There is a recommendation from the clerk treasurer.
Mr. President, I hope that we approve introduced ordinance 1873.
Second, there is a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Five zero.
Moving on to item number B, or letter B, under old business. This is the ordinance 1874 on second read, which is the amendment number three to the salary ordinance. Clerk Treasurer Tom Andrew Anderson, anything to add to this?
It reads the same as it did two weeks ago, sir.
Very good. There's a recommendation from the council.
I move we adopt introduced ordinance 1874 on second reading.
A second to that. There is a motion.
Second, Counselor Schoen.
We can.
Thank you.
Motion as second. Any discussion, please? Seeing none, a roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Five zero.
New business, letters of engagement to 2022 revenue bonds. This is a memo letter from Barnes and Thornburg. Again, clerk treasurer, Mr. Tom Andrew Anderson, anything to add?
This is in relation to the upcoming water capital work that will be a result of the increased rates. Those rates contemplated the issuance of debt to undertake significant capital projects. As we wind that up, we bid those out, we receive bids orders of magnitude. We're gonna have to bond for that. To do that, we're bond council, and this letter allows us to work with our current bond council at Barnes and Thornburg.
Very good. There's a recommendation in front of the council. What is that actually?
To approve the town manager to enter into the agreement with Barnes and Thornburg.
So I would move to approve the town manager to enter into the agreement with Barnes and Thornburg. There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Is there, is there a custom here for this?
There are. I know that when I talked with Mr. Bingham, they did not change the rates, but that is a good point. And if you'd prefer not to approve this without having the rates clearly articulated.
Based on hours worked, whereas in the past, we've paid a flat, I believe, 10,000.
In terms of payment.
Isn't that, what, when we've paid the flat fee, and I don't know what the flat fee is, it's when it's been a refinance or a rollover, so they know exactly what they're gonna have into it. So they can give you a flat fee. Whereas something like this, which is based on the water rates, and it's gonna be much more difficult for them to give you
Right.
a flat fee. It's gonna be based on their hourly rate.
If you'd like us to kind of push them to give us a more clear estimate, we'd be happy to bring this back to you in two weeks. It's not super time sensitive.
I'll just, usually there's a number in here, and I don't see the number.
That's a fair question.
That's why I asked, so I mean, I understand this is something new. So our limit makes sense, but I just didn't see anything. Just call me off guard, that's all. So, no, I don't have a concern with that.
Okay.
Over the questions.
Any other discussion?
Just making a comment that this is one of the many moves that we will have in order to upgrade our water infrastructure. And these are different, these are revenue bonds, which are different from our general obligation bonds. They're drawn over a longer period. They're more similar. So kind of exciting to see the action taken and maybe how some of that action works.
Very good. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving on to letter B, mailbox replacement policy. We have a memo in front of us from clerk treasurer miss. Anything to add to this or anything? Do we have anybody from public works here, or? I know the recommendation came from Lucas Kern, but additional information.
I thought that the policy was gonna have a dollar amount, but.
I'm looking at.
The actual policy, and it's called here.
Second here.
Oh, okay, right in the middle line, dead center of the page.
And then on the policy, it's shown on the screen, it's on there.
Is there wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the proposed mailbox replacement policy.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it. I recognize this, if, you know, it's sort of an experiment, if it doesn't work, we can change it. Eliminate it, raise it to the dollar amount. So I'll second this.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, any discussion?
I do. How do we determine $200?
Based on the average cost of replacement, $200 is about the cost of an average mailbox.
My concern is that my homeowners association where I live requires here, I have a specific mailbox, and I cost more than $200 to repair. In the past, four years, my box has been hit twice. And it's been fixable, but at some point, if they do end up hitting it, I know in my subdivision, it costs more than $200 to actually get their purchase. So if we're actually saying added $200, this lesson might be given with some other people who own the town. So that's my one concern, because I don't know about the other homeowners associations, but my subdivision specifically, I know that numbers, we're obligated to actually put a specific mailbox up. So we can't go out and pick up a mailbox. So that's my concern in regards to the way this is.
That's a good point.
I don't know if you guys looked into the other homeowner associations, if they have, you know, situations like the White River State, but in White River State's that's, I know it costs more than $200 to replace that mailbox.
What I had understood from the agenda review is that the town has a standard mailbox that they replaced, and the cost of that was probably 175. And that was, instead of needing to increase that in future years, let's just put that to 100.
You know, you can't, you can't put up that standard mailbox in my subdivision.
You know what the cost would be?
The last, the last thing I did mine that was years ago.
Did the town reimburse you?
No, 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 no. I replaced it myself. When they hit my mailbox, they couldn't patch it up, and I had a problem with that. I'm just letting you know that if they hit the mailbox in my subdivision, it's not repairable. It's gonna cost more than $200 for that.
We have looked at our past, just to look at our past claims, and they ran between 175 and 185.
But that's fine, just, I'm just bringing it up. Hopefully, they don't take my mailbox again. Just letting you know.
Did you mention your address?
Very good. Other discussion, anything else? I guess I look at this, this, does the crew leader, the director of operation, and director of public works know about this policy? Because the policy is written by, I think, one of the maintainers. I guess, was this discussed by the by the public works department?
Yeah, Mr. Gunt, you're online.
Yes, good evening. This has been a policy that we've had in place informally for approximately two years. I think we had an instance where one resident had a very expensive landscape-style mailbox that was super expensive, and we discussed with the clerk treasurer's office at that time and came up with what was felt to be a reasonable amount. Prior to this $200 amount, we had been operating, I believe, under $175 limit. But yes, the policy was derived within public works by myself in consultation with the management team and including Lucas Kern and Patricia Abbott.
Thank you. I don't know that we have hard data on this, but do we have an idea of how many mailboxes, how many cases per year? Yeah. We see.
If I may comment, I don't have any hard figures on that right now, but every year, mailboxes are damaged, you know, as a result of typically the snow coming off of the plow. And if they, they're meant to withstand that, if they don't, if it's proven to be a case of some kind of rot in the pole, we won't reimburse for that. But we, you know, typically, I think, are involved in anywhere from half a dozen to a dozen mailbox repairs every season.
Thank you.
Mr. President, my only, I'm not that I'm against this, but I was just thinking, if you, especially if you've just put up a new mailbox and it's a designer mailbox, if you will, I mean, they can get pretty expensive, and if someone ruined it, kind of like if you crashed your car, you would expect it to be replaced, I guess. I don't know, Mr. Russell, do you have any thoughts about that?
Right. So, insert lawyer joke, but it depends, right? Like, if it's snow getting thrown onto a mailbox because we're plowing the streets, that's one thing, right? Because you put a mailbox a foot from the street, and then snow gets thrown. I mean, it's perfectly reasonable that if I have my property a foot from the street and it snows, there's gonna get snow on it, right? That's one instance. The other instance is, is like, let's say, one of our drivers just backs up and knocks the thing over, right? Like, in the second instance, I think the town's liable for the fair market value of not, not necessarily the replacement value, but what's the value of, right? So if I bought my mailbox 20 years ago, and I spent 200 bucks on my mailbox, but I wanna put a $500 model in, the town's responsible for 200 legally. All that said, you guys could do whatever policy you wanna do, right? Like, that's, that's fine. But I do think there's a pretty big difference between the natural accumulation of snow and the town's obligation to follow the streets, and having snow hit a mailbox and knocking it over versus a plow or a truck being a mailbox. Legally, I think, I think there's a big difference. So, but all that said, you can do whatever you want, like policy law. Because it's a policy call.
Right.
And to Andy's point, if a truck knocks over a $1,500 mailbox, and they call, my advice to you is gonna be, you destroyed a $1,500 mailbox, you gotta replace a $1,500 mailbox. Not now they want a $5,000 mailbox, well, that's on them, but the value of what you destroyed, right?
Okay.
But doesn't the homeowner take some risk if you're gonna put up a mailbox that is, you know, so much more than with the town a lot, as far as homeowners policies, the town isn't bound by any of those?
I think there's, that's true. So your second, your last point is true. Regardless of what the homeowners association requires, that's beyond the town, right? But the bottom line is, is, yeah, there's some risk of a natural accumulation of snow getting thrown from the street. I put my expensive piece of property right next to a street, it snows, and we throw in this street gets plowed and the snow goes on it. That's one thing, right? You did assume some of that risk. I didn't assume the risk of a plow driver driving over my mailbox, right? So where we guys wanted to.
Does the policy clarify that this is from snow damage, or this is just mailbox damage?
Mailbox damage.
Wishes of the council?
We have a motion and a second.
Any other discussion?
Was there a desire to table or manage? If you want to?
You do have a couple of months hopefully before.
Yeah.
I guess I understand the snow aspect.
Don't talk about the weather. We're working on that.
That's, that's what I'm saying. If you're gonna, if we're gonna hit, knock down a mailbox physically, we should be encouraged to replace that box. Some cost more than $200. And it's not worth it.
However, Dr. Andy, are you saying if we actually physically hit it, but it's snow damage goes up there? If it's snow, if snow hits.
Right. From personal experience, I have been hit twice. Literally on the ground, on the street, hit.
Hit with wet snow or, or snow?
Hit with the plow.
Oh, hit with the plow, okay.
With wet snow. It endures wet snow.
Okay.
I'm physically hit by the plow.
And see, that, that's where, I'm getting hung up on the spot. If it's physically gets hit, hits by our equipment, our machinery, our truck, then I think we have a higher standard than if it gets hit with snow.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's not worth it that way. That's what, all I'm saying.
So you wanna.
Like I said, through my personal experience, if it was rectified, everything was put back up, and it was fine. I didn't have a problem with it. I'm just letting you know, if it happens to somebody else, and you can't even put up, I said, oh, you gotta go, go get a new mailbox. They call this company, and they say, how much are you paying me? You're like, okay, look, they're paying the difference. And I don't know if you can chase your truck, but most people have to pay $500. So it's like, that's all I'm bringing up right now. That's all, that's the only reason why I brought it up. This is a very minute policy here. I've been striking out longer than I expected, but I just wanted to say what we're actually moving for. So.
I think to the people who made the motion, second, maybe there's a reason to table it just for staff to review and clarify the types of.
Just. Sounds like a few steps to clean up the wording, so then I would move to table this item to the next regular council.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, to table this topic. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Five zero. If I have this, the original motion, is it just?
I thought we were done.
Who made the original motion?
Counselor Tulowitzki.
So have the minutes reflect that he's amended his motion.
No, he hasn't amended it. It was tabled. That's a very different thing.
It doesn't change the motion. It just puts off the discussion of it.
Okay.
And have a re-reflection. It was tabled until next week.
That's fair. Okay, moving on to letter C, proposal for design services on Beverly Place. Deputy Town Manager Di Tomaso.
So Beverly Place is one of the streets in our next ask for CCMG funds. That period, application period is open right now. And due to the short turnaround time between when those funds get awarded and when we have to be under contract with a contractor, we are asking to contract with SEH to do the design for that road reconstruction. And that's what this memo and attached proposal are.
Very good. Wishes of the council?
Will we authorize the town manager to sign the supplemental letter agreement with SEH for the engineering design service amount not to exceed $35,891.11 and for resident project representative services on an hourly basis not to exceed the amount of $5,546.11.
I'll second. Motion, a second, any discussion?
22, whoever may be watching the Zoom or in the room, this is a I know we talked about this, we call it an infinity sewer. But here's an example of what it might look like now. We have quite a wide parkway at Beverly Place. And so this will help us upgrade that area and make better use of stormwater management and make it sort of feel more like some of the eventual streetscape plans that we also are planning to make in town.
The residents along Beverly have been advised that things are being thought about.
As you know, residents in Ward One are active and engaged, Dr. Schoen, and I have had a number of conversations with residents on Beverly and around Beverly. There has not been an official communication on town letterhead where we'll engage residents in a meaningful, like, programmatic way. That will be a conversation that we'll have with those residents. So to your question, not yet officially.
Okay.
Discussion items. And this project representative services hourly basis, that would also involve potentially president engagement?
That is for the construction observation when the road is being built.
Make sure that it's all.
Yeah.
The construction.
Yes.
My question, have we looked at the maintenance cost? Or again, I think this is a great project. I think it's a good thing that we're looking at it, but have we looked at, or do we anticipate any kind of, how this is going to be maintained?
I think most of these green infrastructure are low maintenance and lower maintenance than the grass that we currently mow in this location.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Any other questions or discussion items? Roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Letter D, ordinance 1875. This is the amending section 58102 of Munster, Indiana code regarding water meter size. Any further description or discussion with regards to the?
So the only change in the, in the, in the code is to add that the table that you see in there. The original code just states that the utility will designate the size of the meter to be used for serving any customer. And in order to just eliminate any confusion about the size of a meter in relation to the size of the pipe entering the building from the water main, we added this table.
Since this is an ordinance, there's, we will need to read this on two readings unless we waive the rules or suspend rules and waive the readings and adopt on first read tonight. Wishes of the council?
Is there any reason why we'd have to, would it be advantageous to waive the rules and have a second reading? As building or anything is concerned?
I don't think this is an emergency that would rise to the occasion that you would need to
I assume not.
waive the rules. We have had.
Does refer to first reading.
We have had at least one resident, if not more, kind of calling to see if this was possible, and to date, we've said no. And they've said fine, unhappily, but it would provide a level of comfort to have that codified.
Yes. I would move that we hear ordinance 1875 on first hearing and schedule second read for the next council.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Item E, public works disposal of property. Mr. Gunt, anything to add?
No, I think the memo is self-explanatory. Thank you.
There is a recommendation from staff.
I will be authorized, the public works department, to move and dispose of this property from this current inventory for scrap.
Second motion.
There is a motion, a second, any discussion? Very good. Seeing none, roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Five zero.
Okay, moving on to reports. Are there any reports from the council?
I have something. I have a couple of things, actually.
Okay.
First of all, very exciting, the Munster Civic Foundation recognition of the town of Munster's 115th birthday. Distributed the centennial history of Munster, Indiana books. We distributed in the month of July, 1,064 books. We have a few remaining, which I put a note on. Eventually, it'll go to the Civic Foundation for approval, but to do it again in five years and get rid of the remaining inventory. People were very happy. They loved the books. It was a very good, positive thing for residents. As you know.
I wonder is there an idea to have like a book club or something, you know, some sort of event where those people will receive the books where you can come together about the history of the town.
I want to think that's a very good idea. Thank you, counselor, and maybe organize something like that. Exactly.
How many boxes of books will we save for another five years?
We have approximately nine hundred books left, well, to distribute in five years. There's.
You're okay with holding on to them for another five years?
They're stacked neatly in a place that is out of the way.
Okay.
I think with the response, the positive response that we got and with the turnover of residents, I think in five years, we can probably distribute them again. So. Yeah, fresh begins. As many of you know, I sit on the board of NERC CM, on the executive board. We had a meeting the last week, week or two, and one of the things that they distributed for all municipalities is reminded us about the opportunity for grants. I know that we've been looking into several of them. The three that they specify were reconnecting communities, safe streets and the railroad crossing. So I was pleased to see we had already looked at some of them and we're moving forward. And last year, we partnered with NERC C and IU in a green gas resilience study. And that draft is slated to be released in August. And they'll have a framework for the Northwest Indiana Regional Climate Action sometime in November. So we haven't really talked about it, but we did contribute the data last year and it is taking a little longer than we expected, but we should see results before year end. And then AIM had a roundtable in Sherrville and the focus was public art. And once again, it was nice to share what we're doing here in the town of Munster and people were very receptive to it. But it was good to hear about some grant opportunities through the state that we should be able to consider, especially with the streets gate next year. So a few things going on.
Very good. Thanks for that information. Anybody else?
I have one thing, Chuck, and maybe it was mentioned before and I'm drawing a blank, but if our residents haven't seen the mural yet, it's on the, when you come into Munster from Lansing, it's on the side of the help me out.
Munster rentals.
Water's edge is the business.
Yes, it used to be the Munster rental.
Fibridge Road.
Fibridge Road and it was paid for, it was it was organized through the Munster Civic Foundation, but through Wendy's work and her keeping her eyes open, she saw that there was a grant available. So she applied for it and happy to say that the entire mural was paid for by a grant. So and it was a local artist, Lindsay Harris, and it's really cute. It's, it's nice. Very bright. So happy to see that finished.
We have a civic foundation meeting in August and I'd like to recommend that we do like a ribbon cutting or something over there to kind of really showcase, but we'll talk about this. Engineers' opportunities.
The folks in Indianapolis, the tourism folks in Indianapolis are aware of all this?
Yes, they are and they.
Don't they have some kind of a recognition for the best project of the year?
Would that be nice? You know, I love a good award. So I will look into that. I have a meeting, a Zoom meeting with the director of the Indiana Arts Commission next week. So I'll ask her about that because I wanted to follow up with her on other opportunities for public art.
Very good, very good. Thank you. Anything else?
I could give an update from Lake County Solid Waste Management District Board. The development of the facility itself, which is the girls, the old Girl Scouts building on Broadway in Merrillville is moving forward. The board is allocated about $750,000 for the build of all your kids to go learn about recycling and waste management. And then also this is sort of, it doesn't really impact the town of Munster in a material way, but I was unaware of it until it came up. We need to be there. The Southlake Mall has, as happened in Highland with, I think, Meyer a few years ago, has challenged their assessment for, for a period of ten years. And so the entities, there are a number of entities which are materially impacted. Howard is most largely impacted to the town to like nine million dollars. The current liability for the waste management board is $174,000 for the four years that could rise up to $470,000. So it's it, it won't have, I don't believe, a material impact on the payments that we receive for recycling grants and so forth. I thought it was of general interest to know that's happening in, in our community.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other comments or reports or announcements? Announcements, our next town council meeting will be August fifteenth. After that meeting will be the, the next Civic Foundation meeting. And then on September sixth, due to Labor Day being on September fifth, we are scheduling a special town council meeting on Tuesday, September sixth. Just to make sure that that is on, that we have regular every couple of weeks meetings. So that is a special announcement there. Seeing nothing else, I'll make entertainment motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Hi.
Aye. And then we'll move into our redevelopment commission regular meeting. I think Mr. John Castro is online. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct, sir.
Right into that. I'll call the meeting in order for redevelopment commission on August first, two thousand twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schoen.
Present.
Commissioner Mellon.
Present.
Commissioner Tulowitzki.
Present.
Commissioner Kulturitis.
Present.
Commissioner Gardner.
Present.
And our liaison to the school board, John Castro.
I am present online. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Public comment? Is there any public comment for the redevelopment commission? Seeing none, we'll move into the consent agenda. I move we accept the consent agenda.
I'll second motion.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Schoen.
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon.
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Commissioner Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Commissioner Gardner.
Yes. I don't see any old business or is there any new business from the reports, no announcements of motion or adjournment?
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor? Meeting adjourned.